Good afternoon. It's 5:30. We're ready to begin our January Board meeting of the Port Arthur Independent School District Trustees. I'm calling the meeting to order. We'll begin with an invocation. We'll have the pledges, the pledges to the United States and Texas flag, and then we'll have our roll call. Let's bow our heads. All wise and eternal God, our Father in everything, we give you thanks. And so as we come before you on this evening, this evening, we ask for your wisdom, we ask for your power, but most of all for your grace to make the decisions that are needful for the children of the Port Arthur Independent School District. We pray for our families and we pray for every area and aspect of our life, and you will be with us forever. In the powerful and precious name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledges to the United States and Texas flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Good evening, Sandra. Roll call.
President Barti, Vice President Frank.
President.
Secretary Reed.
Here.
Trustee Ambrose.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
She's walking in.
Trustee Lofton.
Come to the desks. Be here and wait till you receive it. All right. Our mission statement, our mission as the primary social public education in the community is to meet the unique and educational needs of our diverse population by providing a comprehensive quality education for the students of the Port Arthur Independent School District. We're getting ready to go into closed meeting. Under the authority of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071 and 551.074, the board will meet in a closed session to consult with attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation, including settlement offers and other legal matters in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas are clearly covered by attorney-client privilege. Consider personnel recommendations, Texas Government Code 551.074, as follows. Consider and if appropriate, approve the employment of teachers. Consider and if appropriate, propose the termination of a certified employee and superintendent's contract and related issues. We'll now go into closed session. Thank you. Good evening. The topic of the conference today will continue in our open session, the beginning and continuance of our meeting on tonight. Let the record reflect that President Barti has joined us on this evening under his directions. He's asked that we continue to preside in this meeting. We're ready to begin an open session with our public comments. We're going to ask Mr. Greg Richards to come forward, please.
I got you.
Good evening, Mr. Richards. Welcome to the meeting. You have three minutes.
Yeah, how you doing?
Fine, sir.
Okay, we're going to start off by using Joe Man 24. The earth is given in the hands of the wicked. Okay, my title, my subject is going to be the big playback. Tonight is actually my night to tell PISD I told you so. Understand me, back in 2003, Richard had meetings in the building next door. Most of you guys went around back then, it was only Pastor Frank and Superintendent. I told you guys, I told PISD not consolidate these schools, not close, make high school down. No one wanted to listen to me. Y'all wanted to do what you wanted to do. I was hearing all this nonsense about Atlanta, all these state championships, it's going to be so great for kids, this, that, and another. Well, this, this is 2020. Let's take a look and see what schooldiggers.com got to say about the condition of PISD right now. I looked on that this afternoon, okay? And I, approximately 900 and some school district, PISD is ranked rank 830, okay? That's pretty bad. I look at Newland, they're ranked on 14, and I used to say, well, this is a poor district and blah, 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 this, that, and another. When I looked at Ms. Richardson over at Jacore Academy, she pulling the same kids you guys are pulling from, she's at 231. So, I mean, she's like 231, you guys at 830. How are numbers much better than you guys? What y'all doing? And take a step further, I looked at senior, I'm sorry, I looked at high school standardized test scores, Jacore's, see, Jacore's High School test scores roughly is 75, it's basically C. You guys, I mean, when I saw this number, Richards really tripped me out, it's 24.6. Now, how did you score at 24.6? That's pretty bad. So, what I'm saying is, what are you guys doing to fix this? I believe I talked about this a couple of years ago, and numbers have gotten worse. So, since consolidation, it's done the district getting better, academics, it's got worse. So, my, my problem, what are you guys going to do about this situation? And another thing, I picked up my Houston Chronicle last week, and I look at it, and I find that PISD is ranked number two in terms of suspensions. Thirty-one out of every one hundred kids gets suspended is different. That's number two in the state. Only PISD got a worse number than you guys. So, I mean, leading the state in suspensions, you had the father, you guys got these nice red suits on, this, that, and other. I mean, you got administrators making big money, got nice cars, big houses, y'all getting paid, nice salaries, but you failing these kids, man. I mean, you know, so what is the plan? You hear me, Superintendent Porterree? You make a nice salary, but what's the plan to get these numbers up? I want y'all, y'all should be just like Jacore, around 214, test scores weekly 75. So, 24 is unacceptable. So, I don't want to come back next year this time and repeat these same numbers. So, heads need to roll somewhere. I mean, what y'all doing? I mean, I see y'all, these presents, and y'all honoring each other, but ain't nothing happening. These kids are slipping bad.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, guys. Have a nice night.
Yes, sir, you too. Staff reports, Superintendent Porter.
Thank you, Vice President Frank. This has been a good day. And as we continue on, let me first by saying, saying before we get started, and it is National School Board Appreciation Month, and every, every day we appreciate our school board. But to our administrators who are seated out there, thank you for what you are doing for our students. Every day, every day, you come to this school district and you work. You bend over backwards, you deal with parents, you deal with students, you deal with poverty, you deal with homelessness, you deal with mental, physical, and emotional distress, and you do it from the heart. So, don't let anyone discourage you in what you're doing every day for the students of the Port Arthur Independent School District. Once again, thank you for the work that you do. I will be a model for you tonight and sit very calmly. Okay, to our board members, to our board members, President Barti, Vice President Frank, Secretary Reed, Trustee Ambrose, Trustee Brown, Trustee Johnson, and Trustee Lofton. Thank you for everything that you do for the Port Arthur Independent School District. Thank you for taking on the task of leading us and inspect, just making sure that every student is taken care of. Your questions, your love, what you do for this district matters. Each and every day, each and every day, when you're out in the public, we know who you are, we know what you have to deal with. And as I told you before, we know that the public looks at you when you're in the Walmarts, when you're at church, when you're on your jobs. A lot of times, you have to take a whole lot of stuff and questions about what we're doing, and you handle it well. So, thank you for everything that you do to support the staff and the students of this district in spite of the ignorance that we are surrounded about it each and every day, the ignorance, the meanness, the just, people who just do not understand what is going on, okay? So, stand high, stand tall, and continue to do what you do each and every day. Whereas the mission of the public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent, productive contributors to the democratic society and an ever-changing world. And whereas local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child. And whereas local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our, our students. And whereas local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system. And whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectation, expectations to the district. Now, therefore, I, Superintendent Dr. Moore, where we do hereby declare my appreciation to the members of the Port Arthur Independent School District Board of Trustees and proclaim the month of January 2020 as School Board Recognition Month in Port Arthur, Texas. I urge all citizens to join me in recognizing the dedication and hard work of local school board members and, and in working with them to mold an education system that meets the needs of both today's and tomorrow's children. Thank you, board members.
Thank you, Dr. Porter. Good evening, board trustees. Tonight, we are here to honor you. What we're asking now is if you rise from the dais, then you come and plank the sides, and we're going to have our campuses to come in to, just basically thank you for everything that you're doing. Of course, we're going to, no, so we can have all of them, and then you'll come in the middle. So, you all can just come down, and then when we call you up individually, you just take your picture right here in the middle, and then we'll do a photo at the end, if you don't mind. So, we'll begin now with President Brandon Barti, who'll come to the middle. President Barti, the schools are Lincoln Middle School, Pat, and Wilson Early College High School.
Good evening to all of our board members and everybody present. On behalf of Abraham Lincoln Middle School, the Wilson Early College, and the Port Arthur Alternative Center, we are here to congratulate you first, President Barti, on your upcoming nuptials. We know that's a big move, milestone in your life, and we wish you only the best and all the joy and happiness that a milestone like that can bring. Secondly, we want to thank you. I wish I had enough teachers here to hear this. You have to be careful how you treat your students because Brandon was in my fifth grade class. And so, you never know if your student's going to become your boss one day. So, treat them like that now, and I think all of us would be better off. But thirdly, and most important, we want to thank you for your dedication and commitment to the children of Port Arthur, Texas. You, along with the other board members, do a fantastic job in spite of what the naysayers say. We know that your hearts are in the right place, and we are so proud of the man that you have become and are becoming. So, congratulations and thank you so much.
Next, if Vice President Donald Frank will come to the middle, and we have the schools of Jefferson Middle School and Travis Elementary.
On behalf of Thomas Jefferson Middle School and Travis Elementary, we want to thank you for your service and for taking care of all of our students and staff here in Port Arthur ISD. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Secretary Lou Reed to come to the middle. We'll have Memorial High School, Medicaid Program, and Adams Elementary School.
To members of the Board of Education, Trustees, President, Vice President, Superintendent, we really want to show our appreciation for all of the due diligence that you do for all of the 9,000 students in the Port Arthur Independent School District. My colleagues as well as myself would really like to show our appreciation and thanks for the wonderful and magnificent job that you do. It's not something that you do for a salary. We understand that there's a lot of work that goes undone, that you spend endless hours in wanting to, and wanting to do a very good job with, and for that, we thank you. So, on behalf of my colleagues, unless they have something they want to say? We thank you so very much for the due diligence and congratulations on your month.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Next, can we please have Trustee Deborah Ambrose to come to the middle? We will have my favorite elementary school, Port Agers Elementary and Terra Elementary
Well, good evening, everyone. On behalf of Port Agers Elementary and Dr. Crochet with Terra Elementary, we just want to, we appreciate each and every one of you for all the work that you do, all the support that you give us, our staff and our students, and we just want to say a very special thank you to Trustee Deborah Ambrose. You know, you're very near and dear to our hearts, you come and visit us, you bring our special visitor, Cloney, to come and see us. So, we're so appreciative to you and all that you do, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Trustee Diane Brown, better known as Mama Brown to my son. We have Houston Elementary School and Washington Elementary School, if you come forward, please.
Good evening, everyone, and again, thank you to all of the board members for the work that you do for all of the schools in PA ISD. I know I want to send very encouraging words and thank you on behalf of our campus, Sam Houston, and all of the campuses of PA ISD. Thank you for when you come into the building, you always come with encouraging words, always come with a smile, always come to just remind us that you're here to support us in our endeavors, and we thank you. We thank you for everything that you do for us and the students of PA ISD.
Trustee Lloyd Marie Johnson, be come to the middle for us, please. We will have the Queen Elementary School and Lakeview Elementary School to come forward, please.
Good evening to all and to Mrs. Johnson. We just want to say thank you for all of the work that you do on behalf of our students and our staff. We know that there are many hours that all of you put in, but the fruits of your labors can be seen everywhere, and we know that there is much that you do that we don't know about. But the fruits, again, can be seen, hundreds and hundreds of programs, hundreds and hundreds of activities, and it wouldn't happen without you. Thank you.
On behalf of Mr. Sampson and myself at Lakeview, we do appreciate you and thank you for all that you do.
And last, we have each Trustee Kenneth Lofton.
Use my hot tamale jacket.
We'll have Memorial Ninth Grade Academy and Wheatley School of Early Childhood.
Uh-uh, y'all, he's a guy, we're going to take it easy.
Good evening. On behalf of Wheatley School of Early Childhood Program, the Chinese Heights, yay, and the Ninth Grade Center, Dr. Murphy, eh, Mrs. Miller. Mr. Lofton, we want to thank you for your service, for to the community, our district, and our schools, respectfully. Thank you.
And trustees, I'm going to get you all in, please come to the middle, and we'll take a group vote. This is the news, we're going to get this together. You go, you go first. This is, there you go. Okay, and here we go. One, two, three, and one, two, three. Thank you, thank you.
Before the principals leave, I would like to speak on behalf of the school board, trustees may also have some comments. We'd like to thank you all for what you all do. We see the, the work that you put in in your district, we see the work that you put in your individual campuses, despite what the community might say, and people might come and say, but we know that you all are working hard to get our kids into the right spots where they need to be, and we see that. And for me, I want to applaud you all for taking on that challenge and taking on that responsibility because we know it's hard. Doc, we talk about it all the time, that Port Arthur Independent School District go above and above and beyond of what we're supposed to do, but we do it because we love our kids, we love our students, and we want to see our children succeed. So, I want to thank you all personally for what you do.
We're ready to continue with the meeting. Thank you again, our minutes, Dr. Porter. Oh, I'm stuck. It's okay.
Okay, as we move forward and we go, we move forward quickly into our budget, we have been in audits, so we're happy to have Wheatley Ken with us tonight. And as she comes forth, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Jeans. I want to thank the business office, the executive team, what you do to help us to make sure we are correct with our money. So, Mrs. Jeans.
Good evening, board members. We are very excited to bring you a favorable audit report to you tonight. Wheatley Ken, my sister, the other, her other three members are also available. So, we just really, really appreciate the help, we appreciate the help, and we also appreciate all of the staff members that helped ensure that we get the information that's requested. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jeans, and President Barti and members of the board, Dr. Porter. We are here to present the results of the financial statement and single audits for the year ended August 31st, 2019. And I do want to thank Ms. Jeans and Ms. Dixon as well, and their entire team, just, she may text me, but I can text right back and they'll get something to me 4:00, 4:00 a.m. in the morning. So, it's a, it's a great working relationship, so it makes our jobs easier, very transparent, and allows us to, to issue our opinion. And so, that brings me to this slide. You know, there's three types of opinions that an entity can receive, and they worsen as if they go from right to left. And so, every entity wants an unmodified or clean opinion. The audit process is quite cumbersome, and it's, it's quite grueling for your, for your staff, your management team, because that's not their, you know, they still have to continue with their, their daily work, what's required of them. So, the audit does add on to their duties. You know, our planning process began in the spring into the summer. We came on site for two weeks, a week or so, and we continued to work through the summer, requesting information, but the whole goal in the summer is to test controls, identify the key controls, test those controls, all to determine our procedures going forward into the substantive testing, which is corroborating, confirming, and vouching supporting documentation. And that happens after the district closes its books in, in the November, December timeframe. So, we came back out, looked at the documentation that we needed, and again, a lot of the information was given to us electronically in addition to providing it on-site, and all in an effort to issue an opinion. These are the areas that we need to look at while we're on-site, from HR, payroll, procurement, and AP, those are the big four areas, especially with HR and payroll, since that's the bulk of your expenditures. We also look at information technology or exchange revenues, which would be child nutrition, any attendance changes, and then we also look at the financial closing reporting. The attendance changes are important because that does feed into your average daily attendance, and so we want to make sure that there's controls in how the district records its average date, or how it records attendance, which then feeds into your state aid. There are some required communications. Before I get into the actual numbers and results, our engagement letter was signed on March 6th, or dated March 6th, 2019. We are required to conduct our audit in accordance with government auditing standards as required by the Texas Education Agency, and also because you spend more than $750,000 in federal awards. There are estimates included within your annual financial report, which is in front of you. State aid is an estimate, but again, it's, it's contingent upon the average daily attendance and also property values. Capital asset depreciation is based on the useful lives of those capital assets, and then any properties that are uncollectible is based on management's estimates. And then any properties that are uncollectible is based on management's estimates and historical trends. Now, the net pension and net OPEB liabilities are the largest estimates. Those are given to you by the teacher retirement system in Texas. Those two liabilities are determined by TRS's actuaries. You have no control over those liabilities. And it is your proportionate share of those liabilities for the pension and then also for retirees' health care. So your proportionate share is based on the contributions compared to the contributions of school districts, charter schools, and community colleges across the state of Texas. We didn't have any difficulties in conducting our audit. We didn't have any uncorrected misstatements, nor did we pass on any audit adjustments. We'd be required to report those here to you tonight. The last piece of audit evidence that we obtained from your management is the representation letter. My management tells us that they provided us everything that we needed to conduct our audit, good, bad, or ugly. They've told us about everything so that we can issue our opinion or make appropriate disclosures in the report, so that the users of the financial statements see the whole story. We're not aware of any consultations with any other auditors. We liken that to opinion shopping. If that did occur, we'd be required to inform you. Sometimes, you know, Ms. Jeans and her staff will ask us, is this allowable, or what have you heard? Our response is not a condition to our retention. We don't say yes so that you'll keep us as your auditor. If it's a no, it's a no. And as Jeans knows that, we'll do the research, or we'll go all the way to the state level and see, can we do this? And if it's a no, then we're fine with it. And I appreciate your management because they're okay with a no answer. So in short, your opinion is an unmodified opinion or a clean opinion. There are no internal control findings that would be required to be reported here to the federal Audit Clearing House nor to TEA, and we didn't find any noncompliance. Because you do spend more than $750,000, that as I mentioned earlier, we are required to perform a single audit. This year, you spent $15.1 million in federal funds, with the bulk of the monies being child nutrition, your IDOB, your special ed funds, and your Title I. So every year, we have to select major programs for testing, and the larger programs have to be tested every third year. And then we fill in those programs that are not, the bigger programs that are not tested with smaller programs. So this year, we tested Title II Part VIII, Special Education Cluster, and your Head Start program. Again, we issued an unmodified opinion, and we didn't have any internal control findings either. If we look at the financial statements and just go over some of the highlights, there's two sets of financial statements. There's government-wide financial statements, which is very similar to a corporation. So it's everything that the district owns and everything that the district owes. So if you look at your general fund, you're not going to see capital assets net of depreciation on those. Because the general fund and the other funds are presented on current resources and current uses. These financial statements are short-term and long-term. So the largest, so you have total assets and deferred outflows of $440 million. The bulk of that is made up of your capital assets net of depreciation, which was $326.4 million. Your cash and investments totaled $65.6 million. If we look at your liabilities, they totaled short of $456 million. And again, you'll see that the net pension liability and net OPEB liabilities combined were about $57 million. Bonds payable makes up the bulk of that, $455, at $366 million. You do have a net deficit of $15.4 million, but there is a first indicator where TEA adds back the net OPEB pension, the net OPEB liability and the net pension liability. So when you add back those $56 million, you're actually at a positive amount. And the reason for that is, again, those two liabilities don't represent a check that you're going to have to write tomorrow. It's not like an account's payable. Every government across the United States has to report these two types of liabilities. The unique thing about school districts in Texas is because they participate in TRS, it is a cost-sharing plan. So the only way really that you would pay these liabilities is if TRS were to fail. But I, my, I suspect that TRS would have a plan before you had to write a check for this. But this is the reason that caused that net deficit in these financial statements. If we look at your general fund, which is your operating fund, this is what rating agencies look at, this is what TEA looks at. You'll see that your revenues increased from last year from $85.1 million to $110.9 million, with 64% or $71 million of property taxes making up the bulk of that revenue. State aid came in at 22% or $24.2 million. There's also a one-time payment with Senate Bill 500, which was the decline in property value. The state was able to give you $8.4 million, and that was a tremendous help. Again, I emphasize, it's a one-time payment, it's nothing that's going to be recurring. And then you have your TRS on behalf. So the state, you pay at the statutorily determined rates, but the state is also contributing for your employees, and that's called an on-behalf amount. There's a revenue and an expenditure that's recorded in the general fund, so it's really a wash. But again, it's a significant amount, so I have to talk about it. Your federal funding totaled $3.3 million with the School Health and Related Services, or SHARs, monies being the majority of that. And you also had some local revenues totaling $400,000, which about $300,000 or so was interest that you earned for the year. Your expenditures totaled $87.2 million, a decrease from last year, which were $95.5 million. You'll see that 53% is made up of instruction and related services, or $46.7 million, with instruction and school leadership at another 9%. You'll also see that your facilities, maintenance, and operations, the purple is one of the largest categories at 14%, and then we'll dissect the expenditures a little bit further. I always like to show general administration, which was $3.4 million, and that came to about 4%, which the state says you should not have more than 8% of your expenditures be spent towards general administration, so you're well under that metric. If we dissected the expenditures by object or natural classification, you'll see that the bulk of it is going towards payroll. So you'll see that over, about 72% is for payroll costs. But just the instruction and instruction and leadership payroll costs total $41.7 million, or 48%. And then your other payroll was $20.7 million. You have utilities of $3.6 million with contracted services totaling $9.8 million. And that even includes payments to the appraisal district, your DJAPs, so it encompasses everything. You also spent $4.5 million in capital outlay, and a lot of that had to do with the Hurricane Harvey repairs. If we compare your actual results to what the final budget was as of 8/31/2019, you did exceed your budget by $23.5 million on the revenue side. And then you came under budget by $5.1 million on the expenditures, for expenditures. Your revenues did exceed expenditures and net other financing uses by $23.4 million. In other words, you added $23 million to your fund balance. So you have an ending fund balance of $41.9 million. Within that, you have several categories, and if you're interested or want to look at it later on, on page 18, you'll see that the unassigned fund balance is $26.6 million, so that is what is available for appropriations. You have some other amounts that are committed, in other words, there was board action to set aside money for a specific purpose, for construction, claims and judgments, and other committed items. And so those can be repurposed based on what the board needs, but what is available for appropriations is $26.6 million. And what TEA does is they like to compare that to your operating expenditures. And so if we look at the unassigned fund balance of $26.6 million, and you don't have any assigned fund balance, that was zero, that equates to 111 days. And I like to think of it as if all revenues were to cease and you continue to spend at the $87.2 million expenditure level, that fund balance would last about 111 days. TEA and other industry standards say that 90 days is a healthy fund balance, so you've exceeded that. And then the danger zone for Port Arthur ISD would be $7.2 million or 30 days. So you've built up your fund balance where in previous years it was declining as you were paying different items related to the Chapter 313 agreements. And this year, thank God, with those, the Hurricane Harvey and the property values, you were able to add to fund balance. I also like to present on food service and debt service funds because you do adopt a budget for these two funds. And so your food service program came under budget, did not meet the expected revenues by $1.2 million. You were under budget on the expenditure side by $200,000. Your fund balance decreased by $300,000, but you had to have some transfers in also from the general fund to cover costs there. So if you look at those reports, there were some transfers to cover some expenses and other costs in the food service program. On the debt service fund, that is used solely to pay for principal and interest on your long-term debt on your bonds. You came under budget by $3.3 million, but you were still under budget by $475 on the expenditures. Your fund balance decreased by $3.9 million, and you have an ending fund balance of $3.8 million. Any questions for me?
Any questions, board members? Any questions? Trustee Ambrose?
Yes, ma'am, I have a question. I've heard talk recently that there's going to be some changes in the nutrition aspect of our schools. How will that impact our budget?
You're talking about Michelle Obama, yes. So it may, in my view, I think what we're seeing too, it would be with the requirements on how to prepare the foods, it's tougher for the kids to participate. I think if they reduce the requirements on how they prepare the foods, I think the kids are more apt to eat the food. And so more participation will be seen in the child nutrition area. So I think it'll give the child nutrition managers, directors more leeway on preparing the food and getting a little bit more creative to get, to get participation to increase. I don't know about the cost side. I would think that you'll be able to manage it a little bit better because you can be creative. But on the revenue side, I think you'll be able to increase participation. That's my opinion on that. But I know that there are some school districts that are able to, not every school district can do this, but they don't participate because of the stringent requirements, and they seek participation. But those school districts don't have the economically disadvantaged percentages, so it doesn't always work out that way. But I only bring that up because it's easier to prepare the food without all of the requirements, so.
Any other questions, board members? Any other questions? Thank you, Ms. Pan.
Vice President Frank, that concludes our staff reports.
Thank you, sir. Board members, we have the minutes, considering if appropriate, a few minutes of December 17th, 2019. Board member, board meeting, I'm sorry. Have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion, and a second. All those in favor, say aye. All right. Consider agenda. The following items, which are of a recurring and/or recurring nature, have been designated consent agenda items by the board president per policy BE Lowfond. All of the items in the consent agenda will be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a trustee, in which event the item or items will be withdrawn immediately. For individual consideration, in its normal sequence, any items not requiring separate discussion have been acted upon. Right? We have items one through 14 on tonight. Are there any items that any board members would like to pull for discussion on tonight? Any items? Items one through 14. Beruse those and look and see if there are any items that you would want to pull and have further discussion around and see. Here it is. Number seven, pull number seven. Trustee Ambrose would like to pull number seven. Any others? Any others? All right, having no others, we will now act upon the items number one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Do I have a motion? So move. Have a motion by Mr. Lofton, second?
Second.
All those in favor? Wait, one more. You wanted to pull one, two. She pulls up next to what we do. Okay, all right. One, two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. All those in favor, we have a motion by Mr. Lofton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Johnson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you so much. The ayes have it. Pull number seven. Number seven, consider and if appropriate, approve the chiller replacement at Lakeview Elementary School from industrial and commercial mechanical in the amount of $126,925. Trustee Ambrose?
The chiller at Lakeview is the original chiller that was there when it was built. It's a three-circuit chiller, one of which has frozen. So the capacity was 350 tons at one time. Now it is possibly running on 100 tons. If what we knew, it was getting older and that it would need to be replaced, so we did put it in our bond. So it is part of the bond, the piece of the soap, the $50 million. So it was already in line to be replaced. And it is the original chiller, which the school was built.
Any further discussion?
Excuse me, Vice President, we need to motion number seven.
Okay. Well, we have a discussion, we can have a discussion. Yeah. Okay. Okay. All right. So I'll accept the motion even now. Okay, I'll accept the motion on number seven. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
So move, or do I have a second?
Second.
All right. So we have a comment now. All those in favor, say aye. Say aye, all right. Thank you, it passes. All right. Personally, I have.
Yes. Trustees, I have given you the list of teachers for your consideration.
All right, consider if appropriate, approve the employment of teachers. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Wait.
I'm sorry, motion. Have a motion?
Motion.
Those have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, Doc.
Yes. Vice President Frank, I am asking for consideration if appropriate, propose termination of a certified employee.
Mr. President, I hope that the board proposed termination of a certified employee.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you, so it passes. Superintendent's contract and related issues, do I have a motion?
Mr. Vice President, I believe that the board approved superintendent's contract valid through December 31st, 2025.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Brown. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Information?
Yes. Average daily enrollment, 8,254. Average daily attendance, 91.55%. Average daily enrollment, $8,254, average daily attendance, 91.55%.
All right, do I have a motion for a adjournment?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Thank you to the board meeting, Mr. Jern, have a good evening.
Thank you.